Good evening, everyone. As we start our meeting, Rebecca won't be here. She had a prior commitment that she couldn't avoid missing. So she won't be with us this evening. And as we start a meeting, we usually begin with the Fledge of Allegiance. So if you'd all stand, face the flag, and join us. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We have some changes here in more than usual. So Mr. Hodges won't be here this evening, so he will not be a scheduled presenter. And instead, Jeff Seeley from Ellers will be here to discuss our bonding. And we will then make that Item 1 under New Business, a resolution authorizing sale. We'll call that 3A. We'll take care of them both at the same time, Jeff's presentation plus the resolution. In addition to that, we will forego Item 6 under New Biz, the approval of the facility use procedures and guidelines to a further date.
Can you repeat the first, the 3A?
Schedule presenter is 3. I just put an A.
Oh, gotcha.
Just to, for continuity purposes.
Yep.
With those changes, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda with amendments. Brenda on the motion?
A second.
Second for Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the agenda with amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie. So, schedule presenters, Jeff, you're here.
Yes, thank you for having me. Tonight, you have a resolution in front of you that authorizes the sale of the bonds and also enrolls the district in the Minnesota Credit Enhance Program. And you should have what we call our pre-sale report in your board packet. So I'm going to hit a few highlights of that. So the bond amount, $7,985,000. It was authorized through the special election on February 8, 2022. We set up the term of bond to be 17 years, nine months. So that means there'll be 17 annual tax levies as we move forward. The principal will be paid February 1, beginning in 2025 through 2040. Interest would be paid six months, starting in February 1, 2023. We have a call date established in it, February 1, 2030, which means that the bonds maturing after that are callable. That's a time that you can refund if there's any savings associated with it or refinance, as some people call it. So these bonds are bank-qualified because they're under $10 million in a given year. That broadens the market. It also brings your rates down a little bit versus anything that's over $10 million. You'll be in the state credit enhance program. That's a program that steps in, should there be a default, it reduces the risk to investors. It reduces the interest rate that you'll pay by a little bit because of that additional security that investors have. We also will get rated. You have two ratings. One is Moody's. It'll be a AA2. That is on the state credit enhance program. And then your own rating, your current rating is an A2. So both those ratings on the bonds. We'll do a competitive bid sale on it. So we will collect proposals and bring them to you. We will be working with, Dorsey Whitney is your bond counsel. We're working with them. Bond Trust will be your paying agent, and Moody's will be the rating agency. Now, to look at the, well, let's get into calendar first. So tonight, you have the resolution authorizing us to move ahead with the sale. We will be taking bids in the morning of April 11. And in between, we'll be doing the official statement and those types of steps, including rating. We'll bring the results of the sale, April 11. Board will award the sale of a resolution. And then the closing date is May 5. That's when the money is transferred and becomes available for the school to spend. So we have it set up right now on the attachments, page 1, $7,985,000. We're estimating that the district will have about $7.65 million to spend. That's a little more than what your project cost estimates are. But what we're seeing out there is a lot of the construction bids are coming in high for other districts. So we anticipate you might run into that. So instead of reducing the bond amount, if we get a premium, we will put it in the construction bid. But all that depends on the winning bid, how much premium and everything is submitted in the proposal. The idea is to get you at least what your project cost estimate were when you did the election. Right now, it looks like we might be able to get you a little extra. I included the estimated payment schedule. Of course, this is going to change quite a bit. Now, when we put this together about a week ago, we had about less, a little less than a half percent cushion built into the rates. We've been seeing rates go up. In fact, they went up a fifth of a percent from Friday to today. So rates are very volatile. They're on the move. Now, by the time we sell this in four weeks, you will, we will definitely see some shifting in rates. Hopefully, it doesn't result in rates that go beyond what was estimated prior to the election. Since the election, rates have come up considerably. And as you know, the prediction is that that's going to continue. So if that happens, there's a few little structural changes we can deal with as long as we aren't dealing with this huge peak in rates. We'll be able to deal with it. But most of the cushion on these estimates that you have in front of you, we lost since Friday with the rates jumping. So the, you can see the graph on the attachment to page 4. And that shows your existing bonds in red and what you're levying for those. You have a lease levy that goes a couple more years that you're levying for or taxing for. And then the new bonds are in the orange or gold. You can see that it isn't a lot higher than what people are paying as far as on a tax rate. And that's because we're paying interest only that first year. And then we're going to have some very small principal payments, kind of level that out with the interest, and then back to interest only for a few years. And then the majority of the principal payments are going to be in these years when your old debt is paid off. So how does that look as far as the tax impact? That is the last page on here. And you can see we are, when this was put together, now rates have come up a little bit since then, as I mentioned, we were on track to be a little less than the pre-election estimates. I would say what we've seen since last week, we're going to be right at the election estimates. And hopefully, we'll see the market calm down a little bit and these stabilize. Right now, they're kind of jumping around, especially up, unfortunately. But as we move ahead, like I said, we can do a little structuring differences to try to make sure that that isn't an issue. When we sell the bonds, there's two goals that we have. One is to get you the most we can with a minimum amount of what you needed when you planned the election. And two, not to exceed the tax rates that we told the public. So every, every time we sell a bond, we do structuring, restructuring on the day of sale, once we get the winning bid, so we know what type of premium, what type of rates they submitted. So you have a resolution in front of you that authorizes us to move ahead and rolls in the state credit enhance program.
Questions for Mr. Seeley?
I just had a question on the interest rates. Is there a threshold that if they really, if the interest rates really jump up, you come back to us? Or is that just communication? But they go down?
It's communication with administration. I, in a dozen years with Ellers, I've only seen one bond sale or postponed right before the sale. We pulled one, there's one we pulled about three weeks before the sale. So it's a little unusual to cancel it, but they can be. If we see this big spike right before, as, you know, as long as we don't take bids on it, we can go ahead and reschedule it. Of course, we have to evaluate that to see if that spike is something that's kind of the new baseline and it's going to stay with you, so you might as well move ahead with it. Or if something happened in the market that created a spike and it will drop back down or at least drop some from that point. So yes, we can reevaluate it. And if we see something like that, we'll be talking to Jeff and Josh.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you, Jeff.
So moving down to 3A, consideration to approve the resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation building bonds, 22A, pre-sale report.
The resolution comes from our bond attorney, Dorsey Whitney, which Jeff talked about.
So we need a motion, the second, and we'll have the resolution and roll call. Need a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make motion to approve.
Motion by Luke, second? Second?
I'll say it.
Second to my Brenda. Any other discussion? Katie, I'm put me on the spot on this resolution. Can you read that for us?
Resolution relating to $7,985,000, general obligation school building bonds, series 2022A, authorizing issuance, providing for sale, and covenating and obligating the district to be bound by and use the state credit enhancement program.
So a yes vote on this would be for the approval of that resolution.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Katie?
Katie, yes. That passes by a 5-0 vote. Jeff, thank you for the time and effort.
You're welcome.
Jumping back, is this our reports? We don't.
It is.
Does anyone, has anyone attended a committee meeting or has your group had a committee meeting where you'd like to make a report on it?
Yeah, we, the facility committee met. And it was my first one, so I had a lot of learning to do. But we went through the facility use contract, which I know is now off the agenda today, but walked through what that looks like. It was more of a learning process for me, just, and I think Reed did a good job of getting us in line with some of the rental fees maybe that the area has, some surrounding districts. We talked about summer projects that will be going on, some of the resurfacing of the track. And that, I think we're still waiting on a new quote for that one because that was covered in snow. High school, middle school, gym updates, and then some preliminary referendum, CT, shop, space discussion.
Any question for Luke? Luke, did you find that when you reviewed the other schools, that this puts us in line or we were below the line before and now we're there?
Yeah, yeah, I think we found that we weren't covering a lot of our expenses. And that was a lot with the maintenance crew coming in there and having to spend their time cleaning up after some of these events and whatnot. So maybe we were below the surrounding districts.
This puts us up to more competitive structure with what others are doing?
Yep.
Okay. Any other committee meetings? Brenda, you got the foundation coming up?
That foundation will meet this week. Planning for their auction coming up April 23.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to the administrative board reports. Jen, you had a, you had a copy for us. Do you have anything you'd like to?
I do not have anything to add.
Okay. So, pretty inclusive. You did a nice job. Been very busy at your place. Middle school tech, Tim isn't here to report. He didn't have a report in here, I thought he did, didn't he?
He did.
Community adding activities?
Reed was planning on being here tonight to give his report, and then he left mid-afternoon.
Head of operations and maintenance, Dave, anything for us?
Nothing new. We were going to be discussing a lot of facility stuff with our board reports and other things, so I figured I'll be probably chiming in a little bit later.
All right. Soup's report.
Sure. We have a COVID meeting this coming Friday. And something drastically changes between now and then. I'm not expecting a whole lot of changes other than updates of where we are at with numbers. Excuse me. Trying to find my report.
16 on my number on the bottom of the corner.
So David mentioned, I wanted to get a list of the projects that we're going to be doing this summer that are not part of the bond process. And I think it's important for people to understand, one of the things that we are going to do that is going to be a part of the bond process, either late summer or early fall, is the roof at the CCC so that we can get that completed before winter time. I know Dave's working on getting that completed or at least getting contractors lined up for that. And we will have our bond money, as you know, by April 11. So funding that, it won't be an issue at the time. We won't have to cash flow that as we originally thought that we may have to do until we get the bond money. So that'll work out pretty nice. Some of the projects listed in my report there, these are projects that are going to be completed using LTFM dollars, Invenergy dollars for this year. Donations that were made from the Dairy Farmers of America, CFY, advertising on scoreboards, et cetera. And Fund 2, because the very first project in there is an elementary kitchen update. And Dave, I don't know if you want to give a quick synopsis of what that looks like, where it's currently at, and what needs to be done to make it a little bit better for kids and staff?
Yeah. What we're looking at in the cafeteria area of the elementary is the serving line where the kids come up to grab their food. It's kind of a permanent structure with a half-cement wall that's really kind of high. Some of these little, little kids are, they're just little, so they have trouble really getting up there. And at the same time, the way that we serve is difficult for the cooks to be able to reach over and reach them. What we're looking at doing is eliminating that wall and really making it more like what we have at the high school with individual units on wheels where you can lower some of the items so it's more age-appropriate. And it'll be a lot cleaner and a lot easier to streamline. There'll be hot and cold serving in both lines, just be far more efficient, far more user-friendly. And it's something that's, we've been looking at doing for quite some time, so we're excited to finally get that going.
It'll be a little bit of disruption in the summer's food service program during that time, but we have the middle school, high school kitchen that we'll be flexible with.
You know, like with everything else that we're talking about happening relatively soon, the roof at the CCC and this, and a project like this, obviously is going to depend on the delivery of materials, which is always up in the air at this point. So the plan is to be able to streamline it, get it done, get it delivered, and have minimal interruptions. That's the plan.
Our next item, actually, our next few items deal with some of the items from the May bond that didn't pass but still are needs and need to be taken care of soon as possible. Luke talked a little bit about the track, resurfaced the track. Currently is roughly two years overdue for resurfacing. But the fear is if we go any further, there's going to be a larger bill attached to that because that'll get down to the foundation of the track. That'll take place at some point this summer when it's nice and warm out. High school gym is in effect going to get a facelift with the bleachers. And when you do the bleachers in a gym, you do the floor because that gets really scratched up when they're taking bleachers out. The scoreboards in there will be updated, the scoring tables to add a little bit more room because we have to add more workers for games with shot clocks that are being installed by the state high school league. Some electrical moves in there as well to make things appropriate for the equipment coming in. We'll give it a fresh coat of paint also so that hopefully brighten it up. The floor should be a water-based floor instead of the oil-based floor that is kind of a yellow tint right now, so the gym should pop out a little bit more.
I think it's important to let everyone know that it's a sand and refinish. It's not a brand-new floor.
Right. Yep, yep, just a sand and refinish. The next item comes from our marketing area that talks about putting in signage throughout our buildings from a macro view of where things are located at. And Invenergy dollars will help with those. We're looking at wraps, security wraps in the entryways so that we can see out and people can't see in. And then some logoed entry mats to kind of add more of a branding type of feel when you walk in. The railings and decking in the fieldhouse, that's more of a safety issue. And I think Luke learned a lot about the fieldhouse on, during that facility committee meeting and seeing some pictures. And so those are going to be safety areas added to that area in the fieldhouse, not only for safety but also for some storage to get things off on the floor. Some minor softball scoreboard work and fieldhouse scoreboard works, kind of some guts of these scoreboards inside that will help them function better. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Question for Jeff?
Jeff, could you go back to the bleachers? What exactly are we doing with those?
We're going to buy a new set of bleachers.
We are going to replace.
Yep. And they'll be handicap accessible. There will be, instead of people walking in front of the bleachers, there will be a row behind the players. I almost watched a five-year-old get taken out during a varsity basketball game this year, and I don't think it was Luke's.
Yeah, it might have been.
It'll, it'll, it'll have roughly the same amount of seating, and Reed would probably know that if he was here, obviously. But there will be more space along the sideline to walk.
Basically, on the, on the home side, which would be closest to the parking lot, there's the distance between where your feet go is much larger currently. So we're going to make that smaller, add rows. And on the other side, we'll actually take some away, which will be the visiting side. And then that'll allow, behind the benches, you can get behind there so when people are getting, going to the concession stand and whatnot, they're behind the action, basically. So much safer and makes a lot more sense.
Really kind of evening out the bleachers, adding to the home side, decreasing to the visitor's side, approximately 140 seating difference, but a lot more usable space. Going from 36-inch deck down to 26-inch deck, which is industry standard, 24 to 26.
So it's on the higher side of the industry standard?
Well, the, you're actually going to shorten up.
What we currently have.
What we currently have.
Right.
Yeah. And that's how we're going to get that additional seating to increase it on the home side. Because currently, we have less seating on our home side.
And the shot clocks are something that is being forced down to, the high school league is implementing it, we just have to put them in.
Yeah.
We have to put them in place.
Are they paying for it?
Yeah, that's my question.
No, I've been on that for 10 years.
And we have to have another, another scorekeeper too.
If they're forcing it, they're not offering anything?
We've been bothered to take care of it.
Katie, you were going to make the comment on somewhere on those bleachers.
Oh, yeah, they're, I was shocked when I was watching games this year and when I saw a couple of kids get up and there was like a hole, like that big on the seats, they get cracked in. So they, they do need to be done.
And it's, it's pretty telling when, when the facility people are trying to get the right angle on the electrical cord, to have them go in and you got what, two or three people pushing on them? Because if you don't, then they go incandescent.
Yeah.
And reverberate? What was the?
They're, they're in rough shape. They're skipping and they're bouncing and they're not going in even and straight. They're just, they're in rough shape.
Yeah.
They're in really rough shape. It's a, it's a gamble if they're going to come out or go back in every time we use them, honestly.
Are they in rough shape because they're old or they've been abused or both?
They're 22 years old.
That's what I know. And they've been abused also.
That's a good, that's a good while for those bleachers.
Yeah. It's been a good run.
So we're going to use LTFM for those which we allocated last?
Yeah. For this, for this year.
LTFM, one more time for people that don't know those initials.
Long-term facilities maintenance, this quarter, it's X amount of dollars per student every year to deal with deferred maintenance in the district. We've been prioritizing in our facility meetings, and Luke and Rebecca, if she was here, could talk about that. We knew we had some needs, and obviously, we went out for a bond to try to address those needs. The last one passed to address a majority of those needs, but we still have other needs that are going to need to be dealt with. And so we've been holding back some of the LTFM to try to get through the bond to see what passes. And now we have a little bit of a savings account that we need to start addressing some of those needs.
And you did say that for these two scoreboards at the end, you're not replacing them, you're just fixing the insides. You're just making them work better.
Yeah, we're shifting. If Reed was here, we'd talk about generation five versus generation six cuts of the scoreboard.
So you just, so you don't have to replace the whole thing? You can just fix, update them?
Right. Eventually, the softball scoreboards will be replaced because they're getting in pretty rough shape outside.
Sure.
But those advertising dollars that are on the scoreboards right now will go toward replacing the future.
Okay.
Scoreboards once that account has gotten built up.
Okay.
Anyone else? Moving on, public input. Due to data privacy concerns, speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Individual complaints should be handled privately with building administrators and/or the superintendent. Comments from visitors must be informational in nature and may not exceed three to five minutes per issue. The board cannot engage in discussion or debate in those three to five minutes, but will take the information and find answers if it is appropriate. As part of the board protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassination at a public board meeting. Who'd like to speak to the district? Jack?
I didn't know that handouts were allowed, so I brought you one. Start on page 3, if you would. And after our conversation, Bob, I, I went and chatted with the current owner of High Quality Bakery. And he is very interested in an opportunity to bid. But it is, I understand there is an allergen concern, so if you're going to pursue it, I believe you're going to have to be willing to supply some of your bread from someone else that can guarantee you an allergen-free equipment. I mean, they're going to be able to make allergen-free bread, but the true, I believe, requirement is, is that equipment's never touched any allergens. And that was part of the problem, I think, besides economics. He's only owned it for four years. He's a member of the community. We're pumping a lot of money into this facility. It's a very important organization in the community. And as we talked at the discussion, you want to be a community member, so I hope you give that a consideration. And if he can't compete, he can't compete, but he certainly deserves a right to be in the game. I want to give a thank you. I don't know who it belongs to, for the board, school, maybe it's you, on allowing the Eagle Scouts to, an Eagle Scout to work on his Eagle Scout project and will be facility, I think, in the woods. He's doing some benches. I don't know. Hasn't been decided exactly where it can go, but appreciate your willingness to work with that organization. They have made some changes nationally, but locally, it's still a very They have made some changes nationally, but locally, it's still a very excellent idea. Then the other item I handed is just a, you know, I've been a stakeholder in this school since 2000. It's when I moved here in the fall. So I actually didn't get a tax bill until the next year, and I didn't have kids here till quite a few years later. So, but I've been a stakeholder here. Didn't realize some of the ins and outs, and, you know, I didn't realize that it is statute, that the community and parents are involved in the curriculum. So I just kind of, that was interesting to me, and I highlighted those areas for you. And I wanted to compliment, I loved that article, Mr. Sampson, about how there's a tour planned, and I commend you guys. I'm excited to hear what your tour will be on that, because I still have concerns on that project. We're talking 7.9 million, some of it structured, but some of it's going to be, I know I'm not using the right term, I call it a shop. Because it was a shop for me, it's still a shop. And I've heard about some great things in the manufacturing, some kids that have gotten to do some neat things with the equipment you have. But equipment's still going to be a factor in that. Versatility, as we've looked at, a powder coat booth has been delivered, and it's going to require wiring, and we might have room in one of the breakers to fit it in. So expandability, when you do this, what's going to be here in 10 years? Robotics are going to be way bigger. And you're going to have to have this thing designed such that not only it's doing metalwork, woodwork, welding, auto mechanics. Then auto mechanics might start being electrical. And then you got small engines, and you got all ag, and you got all those other things. And so, let's make sure we have our long-range look on this, because I'm kind of hoping this is a 20-year project. And so, then the final thing, I guess, and I have not done my research on this, so I could be completely off-base, but I do know nationally, and I see it's on our own policies, that we are concerned about the transgender issue, and it has grown. But also remember, the D, I believe it's called detransition, population is growing too. And those are young people in other communities, it hadn't happened here, that did have influence on them about transgender, and a lot of times, it did start in their school. And five years later, they're transitioning back. And talk about those five years or six years that they were in that was terrible for them. Now, there's going to be other cases that people are going to have the other opinion. So this is a very complex issue that I just, I hope we're doing more than just the school association or whatever on making these decisions, because it, there's, I think it's not a cut and dry, as we see in the media. And there's a lot of factors in it, and I just really encourage caution in that area. I assume I got another thank you I wanted to give you, but I think I hit on the two. The Eagle Scout project, and excited about hearing about the tour. Thank you.
When bids go out, we'll get back to public input, but when bids go out for bread and for milk, that's a long-term request, and put that out well in advance and the specs that are needed. The one thing I forgot about in talking to Jack before, you know, I shouldn't be talking about that, we're right in the middle of public input all week till we're finished with public input. Excuse me. I can't process all the time for long-term. So who else would like to speak to the district? Okay, we'll close. Jack, the one thing I was going to throw out is, I did tell you it was a finance issue with the bakery prior, and it was. But I know that we had received, just by memory, we've received some commodity flour as well, which requires them to make an order and go through a process to receive that. I don't believe it's as high a quality as things we buy off the shelf, but that was one of the requirements, and one of the requirements to keep those numbers down. So, once again, just throwing that out, but we're very receptive to community input. And we did use the bakery for a number of years at greater cost to the district. And so you wrestle with that. Is this a good way to spend our money when we get criticized for spending money? But we always thought it was a good thing until the prior bakers just said, can't do it anymore, it's too expensive. But appreciate your input on that. Moving on, we have no old business. And under new business, number two, which is now number one, consideration to approve the updated 22, 23 school calendar. And?
And I'm on?
You are on.
All right. So, quick history here. We pass a bond on February 8th. Within, I don't know, two or three weeks, we have a first initial meeting with our contractors. And it's myself, Tim Hodges, because a majority of work will be done with Tim, and I don't think Jen, you were there for that one, Dave, Josh, and me. And we went through a lot of stuff that will be coming up, including bond sale stuff. We talked about the need for a calendar adjustment for this next, not this summer, because we are going to be going through a design process with stakeholders from, I think, starting in the next week or two, to when bids go out in November. And so one of my tasks out of that was to take some of that information to our facility committee meeting, which wasn't last week, but the Friday before, I believe, correct Luke?
Yep.
And in that meeting, we talked about, we talked about the bond and CTE stuff in there. In there, I mentioned that we needed to have a calendar adjustment, but we need to go through a process with our committee that we normally use for calendars. And at the time, I was thinking that we wouldn't have anything ready to go until the 28th of this month. It was brought to my attention that we are in the middle of planning things like staff development and getting speakers lined up for the beginning of next year, and that we should probably help that timeline. Said okay. So we got a meeting put together last week and discussed different options. One, the need of doing a calendar adjustment. Carl Sanderson, who's going to be our general contractor, said anywhere from eight to 10 million dollars is the most they can do in a summer. They've been doing construction for a long time. And what's interesting also, obviously, and I know who mentioned it tonight, that there's always the risk of material issues that we go through, getting subcontractors lined up, labor shortages, however you want to take a look at it. And so, there really was a need for that two-week extension, not this summer, but set us up for the following summer. With that being said, obviously, the vote took place in February. If we would have passed it in May, we wouldn't have had these problems, I don't think, because we would have taken care of this by September, October timeframe, if not earlier. So, there really isn't an option to delay by a year the construction project. So it wouldn't be this, wouldn't be this summer, it wouldn't be next summer, it would be the following summer, because the current numbers that we used are based on the current bidding environment. And you don't know what the future's going to hold, it could be cheaper. And you heard what Jess Sealy tonight, the interest rates. If we would have passed this back in May and went out for bonds in June or July, we would have been sitting very pretty with interest rates, obviously. That didn't happen. We are doing what we're doing. If we delay any further, not only do interest rates go up, the costs go up, we're looking at pretty good inflation right now on items. So that eventually would put us over the budget of our project, and we would have to cut back on what we told the community we would be... Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. With that being said, had a meeting last week and kind of came to the conclusion at that time to have a two-week early start. Initially, we talked about a three-week early start, but we settled on a two-week early start. That would start us somewhere in the middle of August. I believe this is the calendar. Yes. And get us out in the middle of May, two weeks early than what we normally get out. The semester's lined up actually, nice with Christmas break, I have no idea about that, but that's neither here nor there. Since that meeting and since this was released, we received lots of feedback, I'd say so. And after some more consideration and communication with the administration and the union reps, we still have this option, obviously. I put together a one-week early calendar and a one-week late start the following year calendar as a middle-of-the-road type of proposal. Today, that is this one. This only gets us through next year because the next two-year calendar cycle isn't proposed yet, so we would need to go through that process in October. But the idea would be, we could look at starting late that following year, but that's also a spring break year, so staff would have choices. So we could take out, you know, we'd still start a week late, but we wouldn't have to go a week later into the following summer, if that makes sense. You could easily take out your spring break and have two years of no spring break, and then flip-flop the next two-year cycle and have two years of spring break as an option. That way, you get somewhat of a compromise in there. If we start, if we don't do anything this year, the fear is, there is a school district in southeast Minnesota that vividly sticks out because it's just shocking that they didn't do anything with an early start or a late release, and they got to mid-August and they go, oh, guess what? We have to start school two to three weeks late all of a sudden in the middle of August. So now you're putting parents behind the eight ball, trying to find additional daycare. And so you have to have some level of understanding with that as well. I don't think not doing anything is an option, to be quite honest with you. I said, that just puts us in a perilous position to have everything go right. I kind of like the one-week and one-week piece. And I, I don't know if you want to decide tonight, that's obviously your guys' decision, but we can be here on the 28th and make that finalized decision. Because I think, maybe some of this, I haven't talked to any of the staff development committee members, but I think they understand after the kerfuffle we went through from last Friday through today, that maybe it wasn't worth pushing it a little bit. So, that's that. I don't know if it's worth, it was worth pushing it this quickly just to get some speed.
From your perspective, is anything hurt by a two-week delay till our next meeting?
I don't think so, unless Jen has any thoughts on that. I originally wanted to get something prepared for the 28th, but, you know, we had, I was made aware that we were already scheduling speakers.
I don't know if two weeks is going to matter as much for parents. I think it's important that staff are, you know, a little bit more prepared. I mean, I'm not going to explain to you the detailed process I have to go through to secure picture-taking and now moving this back. So I would like to get started on that. But, I mean, I think as much notice as possible is important.
We realize that this does affect some people in certain situations with FMOLA vacation, that sort of thing. In the end, the district has the right to set the calendar, and you don't want to go down that road saying, nope, we're going to do this, I don't care who you are, this is what we do. But I think having that weekend of reflection of what's going on, I think the one-on-one might be a better way to look at it, and then decide on what the back half of that looks like over that next two-year calendar period.
How does this affect canon kids? Are they still going to be closed the week before school starts?
Yeah, we need to have some time to clean those classrooms, because those classrooms are used, obviously, throughout the year and then throughout the summer. So we need to have some cleaning going on, and that usually, maybe David and Jennifer can speak more to that piece. I don't know if there's any way around that.
Yeah, I don't know if there's to put those buildings so that they're ready. You know, my biggest concern is that, I want to make sure that when teachers come back for a workshop, their room is accessible to them. And it has happened where they haven't been.
Sure.
So, yes, this would probably push that up, meaning we would have to have some, I don't know how.
Whatever we do in a normal year, it'd just be a week earlier.
Yeah. Okay. Because I have had some concerned parents when they hear about the change that they took the week off to cover their childcare, and then now, I don't know about every employer, but I know my employer, we have to take our vacation time in January, and we have to take our week, and there's no guarantee you can switch it. I mean, you have to go by, you know, you have to take what you get. I just, I just feel like the whole two-week thing is way too short of notice for a lot of people, and for not just the staff, but for parents, kid, like, personally, for me, I understand that you would be flexible in letting the kids miss. I don't want my kids missing the first week of school or the second week of school. And the teachers don't want to be missing the first or second week of school either. That's their, that's their time, like, to get settled and structured, and too many important things happen in those first couple of weeks of school that I just feel, I wouldn't want my kids missing, so I would probably cancel our vacation or wherever. And that's just a big bummer after all the cancellations that people have gone through in the last two years.
Yeah, and there's some understanding of that.
Yeah.
But...
I know. And you're in a rock and hard place, too.
No matter what, no matter what we choose, there's going to be stressors somewhere.
Sure.
And so trying to find that middle ground, I think, is important.
I agree. And this is a, the second option is a compromise. It's a compromise, so.
With this type of discussion, would we be fairly unified that we should be tabling this until the next?
I would like to table it. I'd like to hear what Rebecca has to say, too.
Yeah. I would look for a motion if you're ready to table this calendar update until a subsequent meeting.
I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second that.
To the 28th, is that right?
Yeah. I'll second that.
Just so the board knows, since we're all here, I will not be at the 28th meeting, but I will put my recommendation in the packet, depending on what information I get from now until then.
Okay, we have a motion by Katie and a second by Luke to table this calendar update until the 28th. Any other discussion?
Can we, yeah, I'd like to see if you can speak on that?
Yep.
I think it's, I agree that we should give, make the decision as soon as possible so people have time to start planning for this kind of change, because it is very short notice. And like, two weeks is even harder for staff and parents to adjust, but maybe a week is a good, a better compromise. Have we looked at other things, too? I mean, how much of the school is really going to be shut down, or is there a way that we could move some of those classes or anything just temporarily?
The middle school, high schools mainly affected out of this. A broad picture of this, obviously, the entire shop is going to be under construction, using Jack's term. The HVAC portions of the middle school wing, the high school wing, the nurses' office area up there, all those ceilings are going to be down dealing with HVAC. The roof drain issue, so we don't have water jumping into the courtyard, and so all that's going to be redirected. Like, in Jamie's room, I'll use as an example, her whole side of the wall is going to be ripped out. And so you're going to have everything exposed in classrooms, hallways. It'll be a mess in here, to say the least. And it's not like you can just putting up, putting back up ceiling tiles, you have to re-grid the whole system, so.
It's virtually all academic areas.
Yeah.
Okay.
Andrew?
Yeah. So they can't do it stages where they just wouldn't do the...
We talked about doing it and splitting it, and I talked to Carl Sanderson about that. He goes, well, it's kind of like driving to two different places for the same project when you can drive there once.
Right.
So two half-days versus a full.
No, I think that's.
And the inefficiencies of that might put you over budget as well.
Is it even possible for you, if there's no projects in the elementary school, is it even possible for you to keep them in a different calendar?
Then you're splitting families, yeah.
Oh, gotcha. Yep.
And we would not become very popular. I'm trying to raise my popularity a little bit.
No, I'm just, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to brainstorm. I hadn't thought of that one yet.
Splitting families and their kids probably would be.
Oh, gosh, no, no, you're right.
Wow, and buses.
And buses, yeah. I didn't think that either, yeah.
Well, I guess, I, I just really wanted to talk about, I mean, the condensed part of this. I mean, you mentioned, had we passed the referendum in May, we would have had enough time to discuss this. The teachers would have had an opportunity to chime in as they normally do and put the calendar to us for approval. And so it did, it did get condensed, and so now you get the pressure of, you know, these speakers and so, and it's like, okay, well, we need to come up with an option. And obviously, there was some commentary around Friday to this evening.
Just a little bit.
And so putting it off because there's no negative effect to the 28th, makes some sense, so cooler heads can preside, and we get a little more information. I think the teachers have an opportunity to weigh in with the, with the union representatives, and then come back to us.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, what will we gain by waiting two weeks?
I, I think the importance, importance of getting it right with the teachers, and we're not going to make everybody happy.
No.
Don't have any, whatever, with that, we're not going to make everybody happy. We may not make, you know, 40%, or not, we might even make 60% of people happy. But at least getting it closer to the middle would be better, and better served than getting speakers in line this month, you know?
Well, and I think, like you said, we're not going to make everyone happy. This is a project that, you know, the community has voted on, and it needs to be done, and, you know, considering interest rates, costs, and two weeks may not even be enough, really, when you start thinking about the supplies and deliveries and so forth. So having the option, in my opinion, just as you threw out, starting a week late and having some ability to maybe modify come the tail end of it, on the finishing up, makes more sense to me than on the beginning side of this. So as you continue to discuss it, it's kind of. And then at springtime, I think we spoke a little bit about having some flexibility, you know, bumper days, whatever. So, and the spring break, I think you really want to look at, because the calendar year option, so. There is, there is some work, I think, that we can do.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to table the calendar, make further amendments. And I would look for a, all in favor, all in favor of the tabling of this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good call, five-zero. Good call. Item three, consideration to approve a leave request in accordance with the teacher's master contract, Article 10, Leaves of Edson, Section 10, childcare leave from August 17 to June or January 2 of 2023.
This is Sir Ashley Shaw, and I recommend approval.
Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, too, too.
Katie on the motion, second? I'll second. Second by Luke. Any other discussion? All in favor of the leave, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the updated 21-22 spring coaching. We've approved quite a few up to this date, we're just filling in a couple of new names here.
Yeah, Reed just filled in the softball coaches just this past week, and track added a volunteer as well, so that should finish it up, because it's a good thing they all began today.
Again, anytime we get a volunteer, they go through the same process.
Yeah. Yep, you go through a process and a background check.
Okay. Consideration to approve the updated list, looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Luke on the motion, seconded?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion? All in favor of the updated spring coaching list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration to approve the Invenergy allocations for facility use.
This has been a yearly item since I've been here, the board has asked to bring this each year. It is budgeting time for next year at this time, and so we're asking the board to approve these allocations again for facilities to help the nursing needs.
Look for a motion to approve the allocation from Invenergy for facility use.
I'll make a motion, too.
Motion by Katie, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion?
I had a question, are we putting a dollar amount on it at this time?
You can if you want to. Was it 156,000? 158,000, it's what you're, it used to be the roof lease payment portion of the Inverny fund that we were using. And once the roof lease is satisfied, we've been decade-long sponsor staying facilities, and that dollar amount's been $158,000.
Just leaving at that dollar amount.
Did you want to say a specific dollar?
We can.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll do that. Consideration to approve Invenergy allocations for facility use of $158,000.
Katie, you amended your motion to include the 158,000.
I did. Do you still second?
I'll second that. Luke, you're okay with that amendment?
Yep.
Motion and a second on the floor, all in favor of the approval of Invenergy allocation for facility use at 158K, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Once more, we're skipping that facility use to a subsequent meeting. Consideration to approve the second reading of the updated public input.
And this is exactly what it says, the only change to come out of the last meeting from what was originally stated was to not exceed five minutes. So that change has been made, and this is the second.
Any other discussion?
I'm going to approve.
Brenda?
I'm the.
I'll second.
Katie, on the second? Other discussion?
I just wanted to note that it's really procedurally what we're doing, and it's not really changing the policy necessarily, and that we're going through the first and second reading, and it's not really necessary, so just figured it'd be noted.
Okay. Google motion, the second on the floor, we've had discussion, all in favor of the second reading of the updated public input, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me, I'm an a as well. Opposed? That passes, five-zero. Consideration to approve a resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of a teaching contract at the close of the 21-22 school year probationary.
This is a probationary teacher that administration is recommending for non-renewal, and the name is Michael Millerburn.
So this is a tenure issue that we talk about, their probationary for the first two years, first three, it's the first three years, okay? Administration is recommending that non-renewal.
Yes.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve.
I have to read it.
It's a resolution.
Oh, but we stopped you the motion.
Get a read in a second.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Luke on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Any discussion? Would you please read that resolution?
Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching, of a teaching contract of Michael Millerburn, a probationary teacher. Whereas Michael Millerburn is a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 252, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 252, that pursuant to Minnesota statutes 122A.40 subdivision 5, and the district master agreement that the teaching contract of Michael Millerburn, a probationary teacher in the Independent School District Number 252, shall be non-renewed at the close of the current 21-22 school year. Be it further resolved, that a written notice be sent to said teacher regarding termination and non-renewal of a teaching contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be in substantially the following form, notice of termination.
And that will be, if it is appropriate, that'll be given tomorrow.
That'll be given tomorrow. Okay. Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Katie?
Okay, that passes by a five-zero vote. Thank you, Katie. Try that again, very shortly. Consideration to approve the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of a teaching contract at the close of 21-22 school year, tier two.
And this is a tier-two teacher that we are requesting be non-renewed, and the name
Okay, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Brenda on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. We have a motion, the second on the floor, any other discussion? Katie, would you read that for us, please?
Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Josh Banks, probationary teacher. Whereas Josh Banks.
Should be tier-two.
Oh, tier-two, probably, or what is it? A tier-two teacher?
Yeah, different resident.
Oh, reading wrong. Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Josh Banks, a tier-two teacher. Whereas Josh Banks is a tier-two teacher in Independent School District Number 252, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252, that the teaching contract of Josh Banks, a tier-two teacher in Independent School District Number 252, shall be non-renewed at the end of the current 2021-2022 school year, effective at the end of the final contract date on June 6, 2022. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to the said teacher regarding termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be in substantially the following form, notice of termination and non-renewal.
And that will be sent tomorrow, so.
So motion, the second, we've had our discussion, roll call.
Bob?
Yes?
Brenda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Katie?
Yes?
Yes.
That passes by a five-zero vote. Informational meetings, we'll be busy next time. So anything that you think we need to add, that you have any concerns about, or would like to bring to the attention, please contact Jeff. And other than that, we, we'll be dealing with that calendar next time, and facility use next time.
Maybe if we can get, if we can get a facility committee wedged in between to show them the, my guess is going to be the first one in April.
Okay.
So will Tim be back to be ready?
I would hope Tim would be ready by March 28th.
Okay.
Yep. If he's not, then we may have other issues.
Tim, we're finished for this evening, so I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Yeah, go for it, Brenda. I'll second. Move by Brenda, seconded by Luke to adjourn our meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished. Thank you, everybody. Good discussion.